Welcome to the December 2nd, 2021, Parma City School District Board of Education meeting. Would everybody please stand for the buzzer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Row calls, Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Druck.
Present.
Mrs. Carvis.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you. Dr. Smilek, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting? And if for any reason there's a problem, please speak up immediately so that a technical difficulty may be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Thank you very much. With that, I go to you for information to the board.
Thank you. Actually, we have several presentations tonight, both by our curriculum instruction department. As we talked about at the last board meeting, each senior leadership team member, eventually even, maybe Mr. Nusio, we'll see. Maybe he'll do one of these presentations today. That's pretty on the spot. But each senior leadership team member outside of Mr. Nusio will present about their department and their goals, and some of the highlights and victories that they're most proud of. And so tonight's night is Mrs. Strappco's. Ironically, she is also going to present about the music adoption, which is a very ambitious undertaking, very long delayed, and very necessary. We're very excited about all the input she's gotten and all of the great resources that we're going to be able to avail to our students. So we're looking forward to both of her presentations, and we'll start with her departmental presentation first.
Thank you, Dr. Smilek. All right, there we are. So I am so excited. My first presentation tonight is about our department, Curriculum and Instruction. And this is my third year in this role. So to highlight our goals, obviously, our department, number one is student achievement. But I believe that we have established a very transparent process, and I'm going to highlight a lot of that tonight. And I want to remind us that although I'm disappointed in how our test scores look sometimes, I don't think it measures our success in this district. And we never had a disruption to learning at all during COVID. Our teachers, our support staff, our administrators, we were working together, collaborating, and we gave our kids the instruction that they needed during some really trying times. And I'm really proud of that. And the relationships and the efficacy that we built throughout has moved us forward in a district in so many ways. And so I believe that our student achievement will rise to that level. I really, truly do. Hands down, I would put our teachers up against any teachers in any other district. I'm very proud. And what you're also going to see is our fiscal responsibility with all the budgets that we manage within the department. So our playbook, you've seen this throughout the 23 curriculum adoption presentations that I have, but I want to point out two things on here. This year, we are really looking at our authentic literacy, read, write, discuss. We have always looked at that, but we are modeling that in everything that we do. Any collaborative meeting, anytime our principals have collaborative meetings with their staff. And we collect data to determine how our teachers are doing with this and how our kids are engaging through classroom walk-throughs. We have our principals conduct around 10 per week along with their administrative team. So at Parma Senior High, they're anywhere between 40 or 50 times in a classroom per week, and we're really proud of that. And we use that data to drive our instruction and also our professional development. In addition, we're really looking at in the how we teach, step four, five, and six. So checking for understanding, where are our kids at, adjusting that instruction, and then conducting guided practice. And so you'll see that in our core parts of engagement throughout this presentation. We revised our Resilient Learner playbook about a month ago. I shared with you our social-emotional learning systematic approach, pre-K through 12, which I'm very, I'm just so excited about and I'm so proud of. So we're going to highlight that as a success as well. So here are major functions of curriculum and instruction. We are in charge of pre-K through 12 and post-secondary. We have course offerings, so we audit that every single year, and we look at funding and curriculum. So every course that we teach has a pacing guide, quarterly assessments, and also just a starting and end point for our priority standards. I also oversee professional development for our certified side, and I collaborate on classified side with our instructional playbook, which I just highlighted, and our Resilient Learner playbook. I work alongside with Dr. Smilek for district leadership team that I believe is a very healthy cohesive organization. Instructional leadership with our principals every other week. We meet with high school, middle, and then elementary. We have breakouts with Aces as well as First Step, so it's an ongoing communication. I work with secondary school counselors, and I'm really proud of that because we've really structured a really nice system to wrap around our kids this year. And then department chairs and cluster chairs at the secondary level. So here's our team, and I'm going to introduce some of my friends here. So I, underneath me, and who in my direct reports are Director of Strategic Initiatives, Kristen Plejman. So wave and say hi. Director of Exceptional Students, Mr. Boone. Director of EMIS and Assessment, Mrs. Vanna could not be here tonight. Director of CAS and PBLA, Michelle Porter. And then our administrative specialists who are in the picture up here, Amy Zermet and Chrissy Kruchek. And they are, the two of them are the runners of the department. They are the folks that are working directly with our teachers. They are the ones that our teachers reach out to every single day. If something's not working with an online platform, if something's not working with the way pacing is going, they are right there, working alongside with our teachers and our principals. So I'm very, I'm very lucky to have such a talented team. We meet every other week as a large group. They just love that. And then we meet individually weekly as well, because there's so much within each of these departments in which the visionary aspect is there, that we have to have that ongoing check-in. So 2021-22 highlights, increase in student achievement. So we increased opportunities for educators and students in terms of adult practices, curriculum, mental health, and web tools. So increasing that authentic literacy, which is a huge focus in our district leadership team. Restorative circles, it is a way in which we restore the harm for any sort of conflict, K through 12. And we are doing that all the time, K through 12, in our classrooms, and also as an alternative to suspension. We have updated curriculum in every single course. Tonight is our 24th adoption in the last four years, and it's a long time coming. What you're going to see tonight is an adoption that has not occurred since the 70s. And so we're really excited about updating and providing resources for all of our kids. We have SEL, pre-K through 12, counselors, and liaisons were added. And we continue to have our web tools that we used during COVID and remote learning. We're using those in the classroom now, and we are increasing student engagement and checks for understanding throughout. Four big hot, actually five, that I'm the most proud of is First Step. We now have social-emotional learning. We have three pods. So we call it our Little Normandy Pod, our Bailey Ford Pod, and our Parma Senior High Pod. And our students are grouped with neighborhood peers, and they will go to kindergarten with their friends. And so that is such a great feature that we have shifted over in my time here. We have included some STEM activities and project-based learning. We have added an art facilitator, and we have sensory throughout our curriculum. KLA is a new program under my leadership. It's our kindergarten launch academy. We started with two sections last year. We now have three, and we're busting at the seams. So just to remind you, it's our youngest kids in our district that have birthdays from May to September. Where our parents, you know, they have that time where they're like, do I send my child to kindergarten or do I wait a year? Well, in Parma, they can send their child to kindergarten launch academy to get that extra dose of literacy, math, and social-emotional learning. And it is proven to be so successful. PBLA, we are educating kids outside during COVID, but also a program that we will continue. We are working on a student profile so we can identify what type of learners fit this mold and continue to, you know, exemplify that program. Aces, right now, we have 14 students, again, in my department, three classrooms, and we are projected to save 1.3 million per year to our general fund instead of outplacing students. So very, very proud. And then I have, of course, social-emotional learning, pre-K through 12. So social-emotional learning, something I really want to highlight, and I'm so proud of, and I'm going to share a video clip. We held the Mental Health Summit with 50 of our leaders, student leaders, at Parma Senior High the Monday before Thanksgiving. And we have a program called Hope Squad. And what that is, is peers are nominated by their classmates as being trustworthy and the voice of the school. Last week, they went through QPR training, so that's question, persuade, and refer for suicide prevention. So we are doing this because mental health concerns are huge at every level right now, post-pandemic, without a pandemic. And we have the ability to have kids as our ears and our eyes along with our staff. There is, there's legislation coming down, and we are ahead of the game because we have this already in place. So I'm so very proud of this. So right before Thanksgiving, we had Guidestone in there, we had recovery resources, and our students spent a day being trained to be that self-care, mental health support for their peers. We have been highlighted on Channel 3, so I just wanted to show this clip. This always gives me goosebumps because these are our kids, this is Parma City Schools, and this is what we are doing here, and we are ahead of the game. In fact, other districts ask how we, you know, allocate our funding for this and ask how we even got this program. So we are often sharing the things at Parma.
It is 5:37, and local high schools are slowly introducing mental health programs into their daily offerings, but it's hard to catch every student and every emotion. I recently learned about this awesome program at Parma's high schools, hoping to make things easier.
When we see our students and kids struggle, we want to find them help. But in Parma's three high schools, they're finding hope.
So at Parma High, we've been doing mental health and mental health support some time, and our district supported that by purchasing this Hope Squad program, the national program for suicide prevention.
The Hope Squad consists of several students in each school, 15 in Parma Senior High, who meet monthly to share ways to encourage others, spot problems, and find help. They follow the Hope Squad model, developed first for a school in Utah in the 90s after our high school principal became physically ill once he heard of suicide. The unique part about it, the way it uses the students.
What they do is they go out into the building, they help us monitor our social media. So if somebody didn't have social media, they would let us know. If somebody's sitting by themselves or dying in the hallway, our Hope Squad members will open and talk to them.
And each student in the program is there for a reason.
My family definitely were really with my ninth grade year, especially with COVID hitting and my parents, the family shooting, definitely was hard.
They're nominated to the squad by friends, fellow students, and teachers who see them as leaders and kind-hearted students.
So being able to give people the help they need is very life-changing. Even the little bit of help can change a very whole day, whether it's a medical or whatever thing we need.
Especially with like having high school students going through the same thing as you with college and all of that. Getting to talk to them, not only themselves, can help because they're the ones who need it every time.
And each Hope Squad member's biggest goal, reminding people they're not alone.
Not being okay is okay when it's said. You can struggle with stuff, but still you have stuff you can be.
You've helped talk to me a lot. It was such an honor to speak with them in Parma Senior High.
So I just wanted to share that because that is a true testament about what is happening at Parma. And so we had all three of our high schools collaborate together, figure out how we were going to work our funding to provide breakfast and lunch, and then collaborate together to bring outside resources to help support this ruling. And so, yes, we are a large district. We have three high schools, but we were united as one that day. And we have all of our student leaders that are those extra eyes and ears of the building. And so I just wanted to share that as a success, because if our kids are not well in providing themselves self-care and mentally sound, they're not going to be able to achieve. So the highlights in terms of increased transparency, so it looks a little bit different for curriculum and instruction, but I want to focus on efficacy. So since we started, we have empowered our principals, our teachers, and our support staff to believe that what they do makes a difference in the life of a child in the classroom. When they are part of collaborative teams, what they do as a collaborative team makes a difference in the life of a child. And what we do in a building as a team makes a difference as well as the district. So in order to build this efficacy, we have to make systems and structures that are streamlined, clear, and coherent. So we teach in Parma City Schools to our standards by the Ohio Department of Education. We use board-adopted curriculum. We have a curriculum map for every single subject area along with quarterly assessments. We have a supplemental curriculum link at which our teachers know where to go for resources in which maybe our curriculum doesn't outline exactly, and they need just a little bit more or additional activities for engagement. And we use three guided questions in our collaborative teams. We are always asking, what do we want kids to know and be able to do? How do we know that they learned it? And how are we going to intervene and enrich? And we are functioning as a healthy organization within this process. And I believe that the systems and structures that we have in place, along with our curriculum adoption process, allows our staff members to have a voice in how we educate kids here. The other thing that I'm very proud of is we have the same goals for instruction. So I showed you that instructional side playbook, and then I showed you the resilient learner side playbook. And I know you can't see this, but I'm just going to highlight. So on the instruction side, our goal is simple. We want our teachers to teach clear, coherent curriculum. We want our teachers practicing authentic literacy strategies. And we want our teachers focusing on those ongoing checks for understanding, adjusting instruction and guided practice. So our DLT, our building picked two goals for instruction and then created action steps. So all of our buildings can pick between two of these three goals for instruction. And then our teachers use the same two of three goals for instruction for their growth plans connected to their evaluation. On the resilient learner side, it's the same thing. We want our kids to have common language, common expectations, and common routines throughout our building. Dr. Smilek talked about our PBIS winners and our recognitions in his presentation. We want to update ANTS, so if our buildings are a bronze level, we want them to be silver by the end of the year. If our buildings are silver, we want them to be gold. Our gold buildings, we want them to continue to have that gold status. And then the second goal is really to look at those Tier 2 and those Tier 3 behavior interventions. And the thing that we're modeling the most are our restorative circles, which I referenced, and we're really proud of that. And what is different about the goals here is they're all action-oriented for our staff. So if our staff changes our practices and we're cohesive and clear and coherent in our playbook work, then we are going to impact student achievement and student growth. The other thing is I pride our department on is fiscal responsibility. I oversee four budgets. So federal funds is where our literacy and our math support. This is where STEM comes out of and all of our professional development. We have Essar funding, which we are so lucky to have, and through that, we've been able to increase learning and mental health support. We have summer academy, lower class sizes, home liaisons and counselors, district substitutes. And what you're going to see tonight is how we are supporting our fine arts. We have a wellness fund where we have our VCBAs, our Tier 2 and Tier 3 programming. We have, and I've highlighted this before, so I won't go into detail, but specific groups that are at every single high school, every single middle school, and now at every single elementary with our home liaison and curriculum to support that. And then we have our curriculum and instruction general budget, where we have our materials on a rotation. So by the end of this year, all of our content areas will have up-to-date materials, and we have a rotation in which it's every six years that we update. So we're very, very proud of that as well. I have two goals. My first one is to kind of piggyback off your Dr. Smilek's goal, is to create additional opportunities in Parma City School District for students that identify as gifted. So we added two gifted intervention specialists at the elementary level last year, or two years ago, I'm sorry. And what we're doing for middle school is we're updating and increasing our gifted offerings. So we are adding sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade honors. We do not currently have that. We have honors for math, and it's time that we have literacy as well. So we are really excited about that. We are going to have a committee come together. So we have a very excellent program in terms of credit recovery for summer school and after-school, but what we're missing is that enrichment piece. So we really want to look at opportunities in which students can advance in credit or accelerate, so that will be a component that you see throughout this year. We are working on enhancing our current AP courses and curriculum and making sure that everything is connected clearly to College Board and the board-adopted curriculum. And then the continuous training to high school teachers so our students are offered gifted services. So what that means right now is gifted services are not seen as something that we do at high school level. In theory, it should be, but our teachers just need that extra six hours per year. So we're working alongside with PEA to kind of make that happen. So when our kids are identified and gifted, we have a process in place. They're placed in our AP honors courses, and then they are provided those services for gifted. Goal number two is to continue to build efficacy with our teacher leaders. So I'm working closely with our department chairs, and I have quarterly meetings. This is a picture of the meeting we just had on Tuesday for quarter two. We are focused on teacher leaders moving to instructional leadership. So it's one thing to be a leader, but what we want our department chairs to do is model those authentic literacy practices and our instructional playbook and our resilient learner playbook, and talk about best practices and share those best practices that impact student achievement and growth. And so we have strategy shares with secondary principals. We use those at our BLT and our departmental meetings. And we are working on revising the job description because it's very managerial right now. So we really want that instruction component added to it. Priorities for 21-22 is to continue program sustainability. So looking at all of our curriculum, looking at walkthrough data, making sure that curriculum is taught with fidelity within our courses, pre-K through 12, and if there are gaps, then we will help support with professional development. Integration of instructional strategies connected to our playbook. Being visible, I do walk-throughs with our principals at the secondary level. I evaluate our principals at the secondary level along with First Step. So once a month, I'm in there doing walk-throughs alongside with them. We collaborate. We talk about instruction and areas of refinement. And then Dr. Smilek talked about secondary lunch duty. When I have time in my schedule, I like elementary lunch duty. I like to wear the scissors around my neck, and I like to help our youngest friends in Parma open up their little juice boxes and everything else. We continue to strengthen relationships with administrators, educators, and support staff. I believe that we have that open lines of communication. And again, I shared with you my vision for increasing the gifted programming, our AP honors, and then our summer enrichment for our secondary level. So those are our priorities.
Thank you so much for the thorough report. Anyone in the board have a question?
No, I mean, it's obviously very thorough, and we've had discussions before from, you know, previous curriculum persons. You know, what, all the tasks that you've taken on and that you keep track of, and four budgets, and you know, that's beyond imagination, and an excellent job, I think you're doing. I've been thrilled with all the updates to all our, all our subjects curriculum and what you're going to present in a little bit, too. It's exciting for me, so, you know. My applause goes to you as far as how much you've done and continue to do, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I have a couple things. The first I wanted to say was, so the, I think it was the day before the Hope Squad story aired, there was an ODE update about the suicide curriculum, and we sent it to Charlie and just said, you know, hey, could you let me know whatever? And like back, he sent back, here came this, this article, and it just highlighted how on top of your department is, that we were so far ahead of that game. We weren't just talking about it. It was already implemented. It was actionable, and we are pioneering in the area. And so for me, as a board member, it just kind of reaffirms how healthy our organization is and how standout our administrators are. So that was the first thing. The second thing is counselors. I cannot tell you how many parents I've met that are like, I don't, can't put their thumb on what happened, but how improved communications with the counselors, how much the kids know who their counselors are. They're going to them. They're talking to them. And there's more relationship building versus I'm just going to see you for a schedule change. And I think that's part of the whole kind of culture. People don't necessarily realize all of those ins and outs of the changes that you guys have made, but they see it. They just don't know what exactly, you know, it is. And then the last thing, I don't know if anybody, if everybody kind of realizes. I know we focused a lot about Aces, how we kept our students here in our community, but all the way down from KLA, instead of parents outsourcing their kids to preschools, because we don't have a lot of preschools anymore in our district. So instead of outsourcing our kids to neighboring areas for preschool, all the way through, we have put in these opportunities to keep our kids in their own communities, in their own neighborhoods. And I think that that's huge, and that really builds on our social fabric and our embracing our entire community and everything about who we are as a district. And you just, when you get to see it all kind of in black and white broken out up there, it's pretty impressive, the work that you guys have done. So thank you.
It's the team, sitting here.
Well, congrats to all of you.
Yes, the team.
But an outstanding presentation. Again, Mrs. Strappco, as usual. We appreciate all the great information that you bring to us regularly. But I think to see it in all the many responsibilities that your group has, kind of a daunting amount that you are responsible for, as if the academics of our students aren't a huge responsibility in and of themselves, serving children in all the other many ways that are necessary to help them achieve academically as well, you know, and be healthy. Otherwise, it's pretty wonderful. So marrying those things together is, I'm sure, very challenging, but really an important part of what's necessary in education today. It's not like 50 or 60 years ago where it was, you know, read, write, and that's it. There's so much more. So congratulations on the job that you're doing. Our kids are well served.
Thank you.
I just want to say the same thing. I'm really proud to be a member of this board. You and your team are doing just a great job. I'm glad to be supportive of that.
Thank you. Well, I thank you because you entrust me to lead these phenomenal individuals. And so I have the crazy vision, and we meet so much. I'm like, we gotta do this. We gotta do that. So sometimes I have to learn to think of that. So thank you for trusting me and allowing me to employ resources in the hands of our teachers and our staff. So thank you.
So I give it to her too. I would put our curriculum and instruction department and the processes and structures that we have in place against anyone in Ohio. I believe that strongly. Our test scores haven't reflected it, as you've mentioned, and certainly we understand that that's an important way that people, people judge us. But we also have had huge impediments to that with COVID. The processes that we have invested in, I absolutely guarantee will produce the results that we want, produce the growth that we want. And Mrs. Strappco leads 98% of that, and she does so pretty seamlessly. And that is a daunting task. The amount of programs, structures, and meetings that she balances and juggles is nothing short of amazing, and I'm very grateful for her partnership during our time here.
Thank you. I'm grateful too.
Also, you won up. Your presentation was slightly better than Charlie's, so whoever is next, they better up their A.
Oh, I hope you're good.
I meant next, the next version of senior leaders, whoever's next, yeah.
Okay, I should have had a TV clip.
Sorry. Students, always the students, always the students.
Dr. Schneider's next, I believe, right?
There we go.
Okay, so we'll turn it over to Mrs. Strappco.
I'm sorry, I just ended up like this.
Talk about our thought.
And Chrissy, I want to invite Chrissy Krucheck. She is our other administrative specialist. She is familiar with learners' side, all of our electives are encore and our home liaisons, which allows Amy to really focus on core instruction. So she was instrumental in this process, a very long process. I also want to say hello and thank you for coming to Mr. Plaster. He is a department chair music teacher at Karma Senior High, Mrs. Harris, department chair music teacher at Valley Forge, and Ms. Judy Poole at Shiloh now, and teacher leaders, three of which, but we have all of you present throughout since August, and I'm just so happy you're here to see this because it's so important to us. So here we are, we are going to talk through our five through 12 music education adoption. And so two years ago, we adopted Quaver for elementary, which is an online platform for elementary students. And so now we really did an overhaul of what equipment we have in our music department and how we wanted to grow. So again, all of our district goals, increased student achievement, transparency, and fiscal responsibility, but also that identity to your building. I was in marching band at Valley Forge, and I didn't play an instrument, but I did twirl, and I, that, I still have my friends, and I love Valley Forge so much. I was part of choir as well all four years, and that is really a huge, like, I never forget that. And so I want our kids to be able to participate in all of this within our district. So our music vision, we had a joint committee with Central Office, principals were invited, and all of our secondary music teachers were involved. We looked at funding and instrument rotation. We looked at, within the three clusters, what does our vertical articulation look like? So in a middle school program, how does that move on up to high school, and how do we build those numbers? We talked and planned recruitment and program expansion, because that's really our goal. And then we went over the adoption process and timelines, and we'll bring them back over the summer for writing for all of our courses. We're going to continue to have professional development and creative professional development where our, our music teachers are getting music professional development. So we're working with partners, with Cleveland State University, Kent State University BW, so we're in the plans with that. And our ESSER funds, this is how we're here. So our ESSER funds, we've received quite a bit of money over the last three years as a result of the pandemic. I've presented multiple times on just different things that we're doing, but there's a portion of ESSER funds in which we're allowed to expand our, our programs and our music programs. And so that's what we're doing in the allocated funds for this. And so we budgeted $600,000 for this because the last time we ever looked at instruments in our district was in the 1970s before I was born. And so that's sad. And so some of our--
You had to throw that in there?
I did, sorry. So some of our, our students are using instruments that are falling apart because we do provide instruments for our kids because not all of our families can afford instrument rental. So we, if a kid wants to play a flute or a clarinet, we want to be able to provide that for our kids. And so along those lines, we want our fourth graders who are going into middle school next year to really understand the music program at the high school. So our recruitment process starts in December. We have concerts scheduled the month of December in which our fourth graders are going to come over to the high school, and our music teachers highlight programs and teach kids along with our mobile. And they, they do a really nice job. And so we want our kids to get excited about middle school, and we continue to target our fourth, our seventh, and our eighth graders during the registration process in January. We're working on a try-on event for musical instruments. There are restrictions with COVID, but we're working through that. But we want to have an evening for families at all three clusters where, one, they can learn about music, and they can also see the, where the progressions are with our courses and what different types of instruments they can try on. And then one of the things we would love to do is future vocal marching band event where our younger kids are on the field or they're part of singing with our older students. Music standards have changed, and they're very similar to our fine art standards, so it's creating, it's performing, it's responding and connecting, and our teachers do a phenomenal job. But they can't do their job if they don't have the resources and support to do so. So why do we need new instruments? Student access, I already talked about. There is copyright connected to music. We can't just Google something and then play it, we'd get in trouble for that. Sean made us do this wonderful inventory, so we tagged every single piece of equipment in our music department, and our wonderful teachers worked through inventory. So we now know everything that we have, the year it was born, and if it needs to be fixed, if it has to be disposed of, and we have a disposal process where we can turn in old instruments, they melt them down, and then they give us money to go back into our general fund. Is it, is there workability or fixability and needs for the program expansion? I highlighted 1974 on here, so there's a whole bunch of dates. So starting with 1956 up until 1992, but 1974 was the last year that a large, you know, music purchase was relevant in our district. That particular year, we purchased a piano at Valley Forge in Karma. And at the time, it was a really, two really expensive grand pianos, and they're like the Cadillac version, and we're able to continue to fix them. Well, in the late 80s, we purchased one at Normandy, and at the time, it was like--
A Ugo?
A Ugo. And so right now, did I say that right? So right now--
I chose Dio, but--
So right now, it's deemed like, it doesn't work, it doesn't sound good, and it's also dangerous. So our folks that come out and repair pianos at Shiloh and at Normandy are like, we can't repair anymore, it's time for a new one. Now, yes, in 1974, we have two older pianos, but at the same time, they're a better quality and we're able to still repair. So we are putting, we have put all of our pianos on like a rotating basis, so we know when it's up, so we're not in this situation where we can't even have a choir or it doesn't sound good because our piano's not working. So five through 12 music education, here is our process, a little bit different from other process in terms of our curriculum. We had equal distribution, we want equal distribution across our programs to sustain and advance programs. We wanted to connect to music standards, which I just shared. All of our secondary teachers have been working hard since beginning of August, outside of the workday, during the workday, in their TBT time and professional learning. We have, we have, we did our homework. We got quotes from various vendors, but then we also pared off every single quote and we went with the lowest amount. And then we went and combined buildings together so that then we could even get a discount. So it was a lot of work. And then again, evaluating the trade-ins and repair and the necessities. So two large, they are three large items that you're going to see on here is the Normandy piano, which I kind of gave you the history, and then the Shiloh piano. And then we're also going to have three new drum lines for all three marching bands, which is so vivid. So a little bit about our Normandy High School piano, you'll see the price of $32,514. That is the price of a piano. And it is, we also have one at Shiloh, and it's a little bit less, but the thing that you need to know about this is the fact that we're able to trade in our old one and get a cost subtraction, so that cost at $25,000, that's why it's less than the $32,000. And they threw in a second piano for us that's used. So that's why there's two different companies, because we went with the label for that Shiloh, they were able to trade in and then provide us with this, a free one. So I just wanted to share that with you. And Chrissy is going to talk about our purchases. So you see the middle school purchases up there for Greenbrier, Hillside, and Shiloh. What you need to note is that when our teachers were deciding what instruments they needed based off of the inventory, they were very cognizant to make sure there were equal opportunities in all three schools for all the programs they offer. So you'll see new instruments per band, you'll see new instruments for strings, and you'll see new sheet music, and also items for our adaptive music for our special needs students. They were cognizant to make sure all students were increasing their music availability. Yeah, it's, Normandy, Karma, Valley Forge, you'll notice the same thing, equal opportunities for band, orchestra, and choir. We will have new sheet music across the board. Normandy, again, will have their new piano along with Shiloh. And the drum lines that Mrs. Strappco mentioned are also going to be wrapped, varsity wrapped in their school colors. So our drum lines are going to look sharp on marching band field coming this fall. So we talked about repair, replace, and how long an instrument should last. This is just a table to show you the average lifespan of different instruments that we have in our district. You'll notice most range between 10 and 15 years with a complete overhaul every four to 10 years. So noting that the last large purchase in the 70s, we are long overdue for updates. These are the vendors that we have gone with and the total cost for each, each vendor. The total cost is $504,582. So we are almost $100,000 under the starting budget that we were given. So they have done a lot to combine, agree on brands, they agreed on brands to get a bulk order price. Our music teachers have done a phenomenal job and are passionate to get these instruments in the students' hands. I never want to hear again that a broken instrument is better than no instrument. Our kids did their better, and this is what we're getting. Thank you, Chrissy. And then our last slide, we are improving student achievement, too many presentations. Program expansion, opportunities for students to experience the arts when money is a barrier, that's huge. Our transparency through this process, teacher collaboration, vendors encoding, and inventory completed for everything that we're buying, so there is a tag attached. And then practice fiscal responsibility, we are using ESSER funding for this initial purchase, but equipment will be on a rotating basis, and we will allocate PI funds for that. I get a small amount of PI funds, and I always want to allocate that for musical instruments and just to do that. So with that, I will take any questions from the board.
Just quickly, again, I'm thrilled that, you know, you're doing the thing with music and updating and finally getting some new stuff. Even though in 1974, I was born, I was teaching at the time. But I mentioned earlier today in some, that, you know, occasionally I do tours of Karma High, and when you go into the music rooms at Karma High, and the choir room especially and stuff, you kind of want to get in and out because, you know, it seems in many ways like it's been the forgotten child somehow as you get in there. So, you know, kudos that, you know, you're bringing things up to speed. I did have one question on one of the slides, don't go looking for the slide--
Okay.
But I saw, I think it was Greenbrier, and the 35 ukuleles. And I didn't see ukuleles in the other two middle schools, and you talked about, you know, trying to even things between the three buildings, so just wondering what the ukulele is for.
Look, we have them in all three buildings, so part of our, our process was the inventory rate and then to see what is fixable and then what we have. So in that particular building, we needed them, and the other ones we don't have that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple. One, I love that you guys looked at the cluster vertical articulation because I am hoping there tends to charm. I've already been through cello, clarinet, and trumpet. Clarinet and trumpet were the same kid. Neither one of them went on to do the band or anything with their instruments in high school. So I'm really hoping that kind of looking at that and building that excitement and stuff. I do, however, have a fourth grader, a permission slip I just signed to go to Valley Forge and watch, so she's very excited. But I really like that we kind of dug into that. Obviously, anything with equal opportunity for students is a win. The fact that you guys went so deep into this curriculum, that you included our students with special needs, like the music component for them too, really speaks volumes to how much all of our students are valued and embraced in this mission. One question, can we rewrap the drum lines after we start playing?
Yes.
I want to know if our musical professional teachers are delirious tonight.
It might be a bit of a mild term.
Definitely not even seated in this chair. I can't even imagine how exciting this is for all of you. You haven't seen a lot of new things your entire career is here, so this is pretty spectacular, and how wonderful to add this with all the curriculum adoptions that we've been able to have and, and now to add, bring our music programs up to where they ought to be and provide those opportunities for our kids. Really exciting. This is, this is wonderful. But I will congratulate you on the work that you've done with less than optimal equipment because I've heard many of your students perform in your children's shows. Absolutely.
I'll get spoiled now.
So we're expecting really--
Really appreciate you guys coming tonight. Thank you very much.
Well, I was at Karma High in 1974, so this is kind of a nice thing to see. That's a long time, and a great job, great job.
I had a few comments. First of all, I absolutely love the recruitment process. I know that that is, wasn't necessarily the focus of the presentation, but that's a phenomenal way that, you know, build connections and programs and schools and its retention of students and better numbers for you guys. I also want to thank you for coming tonight. It really is a great show of support when you come, and it shows your excitement and your ownership of your programs, which we know you do every day in your classroom, but to come tonight, we really appreciate it. I also want to thank Chrissy and Tiffany because textbook adoptions themselves are complicated, but typically working with a couple main vendors. And you saw how many different instruments and companies, and there were many, many moving parts to this. And again, the management of the logistics and the details was really impeccable. And then finally, and I want to make sure our public continues to understand that, that this is not some kind of boom that was created by property taxes or Karma City Schools has all this money. This is federal government stimulus money known as ESSER, and we continue to spend it as strategically as possible. There were specific funds that were tied directly to the expansion of opportunities for students. So you saw it tonight, the arts, Dr. Schneider is working hard on athletics as well. And again, there were, I believe the budget was $2 million or specifically enlarging opportunities for students. So this is sort of phase one, and we're really grateful that we started with the arts and grateful for Chrissy and Tiffany's work, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one more present--
Any other information for the board today?
No, we don't, but I do want to thank our music people again, and if you'd like to, you know, leave if it is a socially appropriate time, so you depart, we have normal agenda items now, and we get, thank you.
We will take no offense.
Unless you want to wait for the--
It gets, it's fairly boring at this point.
All right, John, you're up.
Communications, Ms. Carpus, anything?
I have no communications at this particular moment.
Thank you. Do we have any amendments? No amendments. Do we have anybody that wanted public participation on an agenda item?
No, we don't.
Then we move to the approval of record of proceedings. I move to adopt resolution 202112504, approval of written record of proceedings from the November 11th, 2021, regular and special board of education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any questions, comments? Mrs. Musio?
Mr. Switzer.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Kreuz.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-12504 has been approved. With that, we move to curriculum this evening. That's Mr. Kreuz.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-505. Approval of overnight out-of-state field trips.
Second.
I have a motion in the second for 2021-12505. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12505 has been approved.
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2021-12-506. Authorizing purchase of music instruments and sheet music dash North Royalton Music. Not North Royal, Royalton Music. Royalton Music, St. Gordon.
I have a motion in the second for 2021-12506. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12506 has been approved. We stopped him out there being a panic, going, okay, we're going. We weren't, was it?
He's enjoying this a little bit. I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-507. Authorizing purchase of musical instruments and sheet music, writing music.
Second.
We have a motion in the second for 2021-12507. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12507 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-508. Authorizing purchase of musical instruments dash music and arts.
Second.
Motion in the second for 2021-12508. Questions or comments? Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12508 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-509. Authorizing purchase of sheet music and instrumental accessories, J.W. Pepper.
Second.
I have a motion in the second for 2021-12509. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12509 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-510. Authorizing purchase of piano and piano accessories, Solich Piano.
Second.
Motion in the second for 2021-12510. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12510 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-511. Authorizing purchase of pianos Steinway &amp; Sons.
Second.
Motion in the second for 2021-12511. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12511 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-512. Authorizing purchase of musical instruments, supplemental music books, sheet music, and instrument repairs to the music workshop.
Second.
Motion in the second for 2021-12512. Questions or comments?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12512 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-513. Authorizing purchase of digital subscription to you.
Second.
I have a motion in the second for 2021-12513. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12513 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-514. Graduation requirements for the class of 2022.
Second.
I have a motion in the second for 2021-12514. Dr. Swire, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just a few comments. This, um, again, every now and again, a body above us surprises us by actually giving us some flexibility and honoring the fact that last year was an extremely difficult time. So for students scheduled to graduate this year who were juniors or seniors last year, and obviously had, you know, a lot of different interruptions to their education, they have given us some flexibility in terms of how we can actually consider them to be appropriate to graduate. Included in that is actually substituting final letter grade instead of an end of course exam and sort of having a commensurate number of points that seems to be earned for that letter grade in the course, again, instead of the end of course exam result. So we're grateful to the Ohio Department of Education for being somewhat flexible with us and hope that you will adopt the revised graduation plans.
Now, that doesn't extend to past, it's just for the juniors and seniors.
Yeah, it's all about who was a junior and senior last year.
And who graduates this May.
So, you know, kids and parents of kids that are in 10th grade, ninth grade, they, they want to make sure they don't think this is something in perpetuity. Correct. I'm, I'm curious as to how, because everybody who was in high school last year could have likely been scheduled for an end of course exam, so...
Yes.
I am curious to see, you know, this is now, you know, we had graduation revisions for last year, and now we have them for this year. So it'll be interesting to see how this really plays out, really, until we get through that cycle of students who've had large interruptions last year.
Good point. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12514 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-515. Granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
Motion in the second for 2021-12515. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12515 has been approved.
Unless another member of the board has anything to discuss, this concludes curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Kreuz. And Mr. Kreuz, are there any business this evening?
There are no business tonight, unless another member of, has anything to discuss. This would conclude the...
Thank you. And one more time, your busy night today, you know? And you have to yell at Steve.
Steve leaves and I'm, I'm in trouble.
Fine.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-516. Approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
I have a motion in the second for 2021-12516. Questions or comments?
I'll explain this, because this is a large number up there. So if you look at the column that says SPCC, if you can see that, most of them say 9022, which means it's a grant and they're 22, because it ends in 22. So all the ones, people with five funds, those are all federal grants. So five, 551 is 23, 572. If the fund begins with a four, it's a state grant. So what these are is, we have a final expenditure report and says, okay, this is much money that's left over. And once the state approves it, they say, well, whatever the leftover money is, you can bring to the next fiscal year, the next grant year. And so that's what we're doing. This is leftover money from previous grant years, and now we're appropriating it so the department's can spend it.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12516 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-517. Approval of then-and-now certificates over $3,000.
Second.
Motion in the second for 2021-12517. Questions or comments? Sean?
Sean.
All right, so this was a, this is a, um, fuel was a bus that was in an accident. So we took it to the shop and we had an insurance claim and it was just taking too long to get the insurance period done. We need the bus back, so, um, they want to, they got the invoice, but we need to pay it, so they created a purchase order.
Gotcha.
And then we get the insurance money and we'll get that back.
That's when the then-and-nows actually makes sense. I mean, in everyday routines, they're supposed to be so, but when a bus gets in an accident, you got to get it fixed.
That's it.
I get it. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12517 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12-518. Acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
I have a motion in the second for 2021-12518. Questions or comments?
I'd like to thank everybody that thought of the purpose of these schools. I cannot read that from over here, and I don't have mine up. But, um, thank you, and it's with people's help like this.
Oh, there's snow pants, mittens, hats, scarves, over 150 items on that second one.
Awesome.
First one, I'm getting a glare.
First one is through via line of equipment instruction to be used for reading a class slash focus.
You guys are doing all sorts of stuff today.
Good job.
Excellent, well, thank you.
Guess you don't need a piano now.
Did, oh. Any other questions? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12518 has been approved.
And unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you again, Mr. Kreuz. Now, we're legislation with Mrs. Carpus.
We do not have anything tonight to discuss the legislation, but I will have a report on the 16th.
Thank you. Ms. Cindy?
Sorry, yes, do you have anything, Ms. Carpus?
No. Nothing this evening.
Human Resources, Mrs. Robbs.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-12-519. Approval of the following classified exhibits. Confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, approval of certificated non-compensated leave of absence.
Second.
I have a motion in the second for 2021-12519. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12519 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-12520. Approval of the following classified exhibits. Confirmation of classified appointments replacements. Confirmation of change in classified assignments. Confirmation of classified resignation. Approval of classified stipend amounts.
Second.
Motion in the second for 2021-12520. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12520 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-12521. Approval of change of rates for substitute employees.
Second.
Motion in the second for 2021-12521. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. These were all over the place before. If you pull up that second exhibit...
This is the second one?
Yeah, it's actually already projected. We had rates as low as 60%. And, and obviously, you know, this is always sort of threading the needle between fiscal responsibility and compensating employees to do best. What their, their value is, certainly, in many instances, their value is far more. And we would love to see bigger increases. But this does represent, at least an approximation of, you know, the work they would do compared to the work that someone in that job every day would do, which is, we really use that 90% threshold. Again, it was anywhere from 66% to 70%, so we just wanted a, a, a very, you know, consistent rate.
Anything? Other comments, questions? Mr. Nusio?
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12521 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-12522. Approval of classified long-term leave of absence in accordance with the provisions of ORC 3309.41.
Second.
Motion in the second for 2021-12522. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-12522 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss regarding human resources, that will conclude this evening.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Robbs. And now we move to Mrs. Carpus with policies.
Yes, we have, um, first readings of the following revised policies. Policy 2271, college credit plus program. Policy 3217, weapons. Policy 4217, weapons. Policy 5111, eligibility of resident, non-resident students. Policy 8330, student records. And a first reading of a new policy, which is Policy 1617. And all of those were millennial recommendations, a lot of language. So unless any other board members have anything to discuss that with the new policy.
All right, thank you. Now for an opportunity for questions or concerns to be read into the record. Do we have any, Mr. Nusio?
We do that.
On this evening?
No.
End of session. So with that, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-12524 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in the second for 2021-12524. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes?
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Kreuz.
Yes.
2021-12524 has been approved. This meeting is adjourned.